Good morning, everybody. Actually afternoon. Today is October 16th. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular meeting Franklin Township Board of Trustees. Sir, if you would open us in prayer?
Sure. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord. We give you the praise for this day. We praise you for the peace in Israel, Heavenly Father. And we just ask you to be here in this township, Lord. We'll watch over our residents, our first responders, and our road crews that are out working, Heavenly Father. Father, we just ask you to give this board your mind's eye to do what needs to be done and what you would have done. Not our will, but your will be done for this township. In Jesus' precious and holy name, amen. Recite it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call him in when you're ready.
Yes. Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
Yes.
All business discuss proto.
Captain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Captain Bricker.
So there was, do we go up? There was an injunction or part of my language, it's not officially in lawyer speak. There was a judgment issued roughly 190 days ago over that from Franklin County Courts that they had certain benchmarks to meet to become a legitimate business with permits operating under the scope of all the agencies in the state, including Franklin Township. They have failed to get a building permit from us. I have reached out. That was actually due on the 30th of September. They did not, we did not receive one by then. I reached out to Adrienne Fields, Franklin County Prosecutor, asking what the status was because if they did not meet those benchmarks, they would be in, not following court order. So they would have to go back to court another time. And following up, they have scheduled a meeting for Monday, the 20th, which is probably not going to happen because Miss Fields cannot attend that meeting. But hopefully, here in the new future, we'll have more good information about what's going on with that business down there. It's still.
Who's the judge on this?
I do not know that for sure. I'm sure it's an environmental judge or the environmental judge because the two prosecutors from, well, there are three lawyers, actually. It's Adrienne Fields. She's a Franklin County Prosecutor. There's someone from the nuisance abatement property that's also on it. And then the gentleman that's actually leading the case, his name is Joe Durham. He's a special counsel that they've hired to do this. So it's not necessarily on their plate. Hopefully, we have a meeting here soon. I was hopeful for it to be on the 20th. It looks like that is not going to be the case, but hopefully they do something as far as the county goes, zoning and so forth. Because they have, they have given them a couple of variances for things that if they meet these benchmarks, that it'll be approved.
So it seems as if they've given them a lot of rope on this over, it's been, what, two years?
Over two years, yeah.
So I, yeah, okay. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Here or none?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update.
Captain Bricker, can you shut that inside door for us, please? Thank you.
Motion to approve September 2025 bank re-seculation. I'm just gonna get that on. Before my Mr. Kirby, traveling clerk. If there's no further questions on it, I'd ask for a second.
A little second, that.
Okay. And we'll call when ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
Yes.
You guys mind signing underneath this section that says governing board? I put a little flag there.
Thank you, sir. And then on here next, I have the 2017 to 2019 audit update.
I had to put on.
Okay.
So I just, there was someone came to the podium, I believe it might have been Cindy. I think about wanted updates on the audit. And can you come up to the podium two or three meetings ago?
That's someone I've been thinking about, but he read my mind.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'm gonna give you an update.
Thank you.
So we were contacted by the auditors and they were ready to go. And they were asking for dates. And somehow, the lawyers got involved and we got another message that said that there would not be a meeting and there's no date imminent. So I just want to tell you what happened. Do you have anything to add to that, sir? Do you know anything about it?
Yeah, well, whenever I got to dates and I said, I'm good with whatever date they were looking at, I contacted our attorneys and said, at this meeting, we'd like to have you there. And she says, well, let me reach out to them. Did they send you anything pre to look at? And I said, no, I didn't receive anything. So after speaking with her, then I got the same email you got. I got a call back from an attorney and said that they needed to send us a pre-form or some information so that at least we know what we're looking at as we've had in the past.
Well, I came on board two years ago and one of the first things that transpired was a meeting with the auditors and we didn't have anything pre that day.
Sure.
We walked in there and they, and they went over the audit with us. And that's been two years.
Sure. So the last audit that came out, the big book that they gave us, there were things in there that allegedly or apparently were not correct. And when Steve was here, of course, all of that went back and forth. I don't know what it all detailed. But from what Julie is saying is they should give us something to see prior to the meeting so that if we have questions or concerns or say, you know, this is incorrect or we accept this, then we would have it there. So I said, okay.
Well, I read the letter from the lawyer too. And it stated in there specifically that she got ahold of you and she got ahold of James and that she did not get ahold of me.
That I wasn't aware of. So.
And the audit briefings that you were in, or the same one that I went through when I came into office, is different than the post-audit meeting. It's a totally different meeting. That was just a briefing, briefing us on different things. And this is actually the end of the audit. I'm not sure that's correct, but I believe that audit that I sat in on, I'm happy to go into details if you want me to, but you asked me not to do it. So if you want me to go into it, I'll go into it, so.
I'm sure we'll be having the meeting soon as they schedule it. I mean, they're the ones that canceled it.
I'm giving the public update. The public, or the meeting's been canceled due to the lawyers. So there you go.
So, okay. Moving on, I'm gonna move down to new business.
There's no sheriff in there.
There's no sheriff?
No.
Under new business, I want to take a discussion of the regarding the phone company. The way that the phones are routed, I had someone tell me it's very difficult. I know when I call in and the different options, I believe that we need to simplify it. So if you're calling the road department, you just push one button and you, if they're not in, you get a recording. If you're calling a township, there should be an option that says for the secretary and you push that, you can leave a message. Just the way that it's stacked and you go through for the lane, the common person, especially the older residents, they're making, they're like, this is too complex. I just want to speak to someone. So I would like to be able to contact our phone service and say, listen, let's go over how our voicemail systems is set up and remake it simpler. I get it at the beginning, if this is an emergency, call 911. But the order in which everything's there, I believe, should be more simplified. And.
I can't agree with you more. Do you need a motion for you to do that?
Well, I'm getting discussion now. I just want to see what the rest of the board feels about.
Yeah, let's spend some work of the taxpayers' money. We paid a guy to do it a couple of weeks ago. This was a project that Mr. Mazur was working on. And when he left, I picked it up and ran with it. I told you guys it was going to happen. He didn't seem to have any interest at that point in time to get involved. So I took care of it. And obviously, you're not happy with it. The guy doesn't change the phone system free. It's a service. It's a, you'll be paying a fee to do it. But if you want to put something across the board, we can vote on it.
So make a motion to be able to gather the information for the, our phone service and work with the gentleman to simplify our phone service when people call in, to lessen the steps that they have to push to be able to reach somebody. If there's no further question, I'd ask for a second.
I will second that.
Okay. Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
No.
And so this is just gathering information so like, cost, then they'll have to pass a resolution, I assume?
Yeah, yeah. I'll get a cost on it and get back to the board.
Okay. So we're just gonna pay for it twice. Okay. Just want to make sure I understand. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna jump down to, I'm gonna.
Do you want to do Patty?
I'm sorry?
You want to do Patty?
Yeah. Because what time you got to be out here by?
One.
Okay. Patty Spencer, you're up.
I just have a couple of things. Tuesday night, we had our meeting and we had a representative from the Columbus Zoo. And they just asked that I pass this along to you. It's, of course, for a vote for yes for the zoo. And it says on the bottom, not a tax increase. I know people care about that more than the animals. So there's no tax increase on that, so I will leave that with you. And then the other thing is the healthy and affordable Columbus. This is bond issue. So again, no tax increase. If you guys here vote on this, this is information about that. So I will leave that with you. Tuesday night, we had the representatives from Cooper Stadium. And their purpose Tuesday night was in the south end where the fence line is between the Cooper Stadium and the cemetery, they are replacing the shipping containers with mausoleums.
Say it again.
On the cemetery side, they're going to put the mausoleums. They're going to build some mausoleums. Right now, the shipping containers were the buffer to prevent people from coming over into the construction area and everything. It must not be working that well. So the cemetery is going to be putting up mausoleums. And then the shipping containers will be going away.
Some mausoleums as big as a shipping container?
Probably bigger.
Okay.
Yeah, at least in height. That might prevent, I mean, there are other areas that they can, you know that. Also, it looks like, they said they may come back into, in November for the signage for the concert venue that they're wanting to do. That was, said no to last year when they wanted to build, put up like a 64-foot neon graphic signage on Mound Street, one facing, one direction, one facing, one facing the freeway and one facing Mound Street. And we're like, no. So they had to make some adjustments on that. So they may come back in November to show us what adjustments they made. And I got notification from the city that it looks like they're finally starting to work on the apartments that are on the south side there. I know back, I believe it's 2019, we approved for those two and the concert venue to be done. And it was three units and it looks like they're going to be four-story. So I don't have anything coming before us for approvals, but I'm seeing all the information coming through that they're working on stuff now. So, and that's all I have.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor. Is there any questions for Patty Spencer? Here or none? I will close the floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move down to the administration. If you want to, Rob, go ahead and take over from there.
Should we do the motions?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I will cruise on back here. That's my father. All right.
Mr. Leiser has to represent the township at a royal meeting.
Royal zoning board.
Yeah, out of here by one, so.
All right. I'll move right along. All right. This is a motion to approve accounts payable, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from October 1st, 2025 through October 15th, 2025, in the amount of $134,106.59 from electronic payment AC8 vouchers, $25.95 2025 through $26.78 2025. And check number, excuse me, check numbers 70823-70827. And there's exhibits supporting those expenditures.
If there's no further question, I'm gonna do it a little bit backwards how we weren't on it. I accept that. And if there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
And we'll call when you're ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I just have to do payroll real quick. All right. This is a motion to approve payroll, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the employee payroll for the pay period of September the 21st, 2025 through October the 4th, 2025, in the amount of $155,945.81. Direct deposit was on October the 10th, 2025 with electronic vouchers, $2622-2025 through $2667-2025. And there's exhibits as well.
I accept the resolution as presented. If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I will second it.
With the second man, when you're ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leiser?
Yes.
Trustee Blavens?
Yes.
And that appears to be all I have.
I'm gonna move back up to email from Bridgedale resident.
I got that.
Okay.
Did you get it too, James?
Yes, I got it.
Okay, so.
I've seen you reply, so I just.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure. So my, did you read what I wrote? My concern was that that property that he's asking about belongs to the railroad, so.
Yes. How do we handle that? Yeah.
That's what I wanted to bring up.
That would be a question for Mr. Stevens, I think.
Okay. So over there in Bridgedale, Jim, where we cleaned up that property and put up those signs, there's a resident that would either like us to come in there with a piece of equipment and scrape and get that cleaned or he even said if he had to, he would rent something. My thoughts were, and I wrote back to him, that I'd get back after today's meeting. Is that property owned by the railroad? Do we know?
From where the signs are, you're talking from between where the signs are to the railroad?
Yes, sir.
That's on the railroad.
So we can't do anything?
We can't. We can't do, I mean, no. We can't really do anything on that.
Do you have a contact for the railroad?
Yes.
Can we, can we see if we can get permission from the railroad if there's something?
What I was getting ready to say here a minute ago, I kind of stopped myself. Once I reach out to the railroad and find out what the logistics are.
So does the board have any issues if we get a grant, granted to assist and they're okay with that? And if we have the time that we can apply our skills to do what might help the residents of the area? We're good with that?
I'm good with it. I just, so, should I contact you back and tell him that we're working on it, trying to contact the railroad and something? Because I told him I'd get back to it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because we're talking, what, an hour?
I haven't really, I'm not really sure. I don't see exactly what you're talking about doing.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I'd just get back to him and say that, you know, we.
Doesn't have to be today, but I just.
We're looking at, we're not, we're looking, we gotta. I want to get ahold of him. I want to get ahold of him.
And being, being the fact that, you know, it's helping, in situations like this, when it makes life a little bit more better for residents, even though that magic line, well, that's the railroad. By the time we get the railroad to do that, the taxpayers is like, look, we bought the equipment, the people are paid, whether they're picking up brush somewhere or coming there, so it's not costing the township anymore.
We're just gonna get permission to go.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right. So that's how I justify it. It's something that's not benefiting the railroad, it's benefiting the community.
And I have a form that I can actually get ahold of somebody, either email it back or forth or something.
Yeah, as I say, get it in writing, please.
We just give you another hat, huh?
Okay. So update on junk vehicles, blighted properties.
So is there, I've been out of the office for almost two weeks, taking care of some personal things. So I don't know if that's on there because I've been in charge of it and I was gonna just ask. Do you have stuff? Okay, perfect. Go ahead then.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt. I wasn't sure what you might have had. I was speaking with Nicole and with the Franklin County zoning individual Stockton the other day as well. So you can get updates on the, both on the township level and on the county level based on the addresses that we read at the last meeting, you know, the ones that were really long.
Sure.
As far as 1127 Harrisburg Pike, for the trash and debris, that was picked up by our road department. So that, it timed out, like they get so many days. And then once it times out, then we take charge. So that will be put onto their taxes, depends on how that works. So that one's been handled. 1811 Hopkins, it looks like the resident is working on it and the property will be reviewed again prior to the next meeting. So that we've seen a small amount of movement, so we want to give them an opportunity to continue cleaning because they didn't ignore it. They are working on it. So there'll be an assessment done before the next meeting and then we'll have another update on that one. And then 1923 Little is in progress again. And again, that one will be reviewed at the next meeting so that their property owners appear to be making movement. And that's what we asked them to do. We asked them to get started within that timeframe to at least, so that we could see some improvement and see some change. So we are seeing that in those properties. And then the last one is that unsafe structure and that hearing is scheduled for the next meeting on October the 30th.
I have something on that one. As I came down, I saw the trash was picked up. So I was gonna thank you at the podium, but I'll just do it now. So just thank you and your guys for getting that done. It's literally the first time I've came this way in a while. When I came by the unsafe structure, they were also cars there, a boatload of cars and they've been moved. I just wanted to let that be known that I did notice that on my way here today, that those cars had been moved. That was in the back of there. So just wanted to bring you guys, I was gonna bring that up. I didn't know that that's what this was on the agenda for, but I can report that those cars have been moved.
So I have a question on, I was out visiting some residents and they asked me, and this is on, I don't have, I have an address on my phone, but I'll get it to whoever wants to work on it or if I give it Nicole. But my question regards to this, it's off Fisher, not Fisher, Frank Road, down on the right-hand side where the houses sit back, the big ones that sit back. They have campers and stuff like that in their backyard and cars that haven't run forever. I didn't know, I told them I could check. I didn't know what our policy is as far as Franklin County. Obviously, they're not running and things of that nature. Is that something that we can turn into the county or is it because it's in a backyard or there's no go?
Well, it's all about visibly, like the county, the county can only do what they can visually see.
That's what I was worried about.
Yeah, so if there's a neighbor, like say whoever you spoke with is like the next-door neighbor.
Yeah.
And they would allow, allow county zoning to go through the backyard.
Yeah.
To visually see something.
Sure.
But they, if they're standing on Frank Road and they're looking at the driveway and they see nothing.
Yeah.
Then there's nothing they can report on because they can't trespass.
Got you.
You know, they can't come up and be peeking over the fence. You know, they, they just can't do that. And so we have to watch on what we're able to do. But if there's neighbors that want to help.
Yeah.
Then that's where the assistance would come in from, is from another yard that would allow that visibility.
Okay.
But at this point, or if that person wants to take some pictures, then, and work with us to get in touch with zoning, then they have kind of an idea of what they're going forward with.
Yeah.
If you want to, when you guys see stuff, I have no problem if you text me an address. I'll be, I'll be back in the flow by the end of the week. I'll be back into going out and being back in the office and everything and taking care of stuff. But if you guys see stuff, just send me an address.
Okay.
And I'll, I'm happy to, since I picked up on that, you guys are taking care of the meeting things and stuff like that and it seems to be going well, I'm happy to continue. It's just this period of time here with that.
It's kind of what I did with 18 Hopkins, 1811.
Yeah, that's exactly what I.
I'm gonna open the floor for a quick comment.
Where is that property on Frank Road?
It's one that sits on the right. I don't know the, I've got the address in my phone, so.
Is it past Central Baptist or something?
Central Baptist is that way. It's, I'm talking, Klein Road. My apologies.
Okay, thank you. For the.
Klein. Yeah, Klein Road. My apologies.
Okay.
They all run together.
So if you send, if you send me the address, then I can try to look into it a little bit more and then we can, I'll get with Nicole and then she kind of takes it that part.
I'll just get, after the meeting, I'll look at my notes and try to find it.
Yeah, and then we'll just see what kind of, and then I'll let you know what, like what, what's advised so that we're not moving forward on something that the board's not aware of.
So I did speak with Mr. Stevens and on, give me the name of that street. I messed up.
You gave me a lot of names. What were you talking about?
The one that's by Franklin Heights High School. You go down Deer, Deer Road.
Deer Road.
Deer Road, or is it Deer or Deer?
Deer.
Deer. Okay, so Deer Road, just pick your poison. You just drive down it and you look. When I was in the area and I went to the other street, the house is back up, the first thing someone said is, is there anything you can do? And I said, I noticed it, I took note of it, and I would be contacting the proper people to take a look at that street. So, and that street seems to be the rented street.
It seems like it out of, out of the group of streets in here, it seems to be the.
Right, right. Because that's, as soon as you get off that street and you go to the next one, everyone keeps their property very nice. And the people at the very end of that street, you know, they, they're at the very end on a corner and they keep theirs nice and they're, and they're just like, I hate coming home that way or have company come that way. So, and I said, yes, I noticed it. And so I thought I would bring that to your attention as well. Moving on, next up, we have the police department, sir. If you want to introduce yourself and.
Good afternoon, Sergeant Pollock. I'm filling in for Lieutenant Ratliff. He'll be back for the next meeting. Guess I'd start out with the department stats. For September. Total calls for September were 1,137, include 33 assists to other units, 53 domestics, 11 burglaries, 83 auto crashes, 38 mental health crises. We had two shootings, nine persons with a gun, 18 stolen vehicles, seven recovered We had two shootings, nine persons with a gun, 18 stolen vehicles, seven recovered stolen vehicles, eight suicide attempts, nine vandalism, 14 threats or harassments, 49 alarm drops, nine assaults, 184 suspicious persons or vehicles, five missing persons, 54 thefts, 17 juvenile complaints, I have had a stabbing, eight DUIs, and one overdose. We had 94 total incident reports, 128 traffic stops, which resulted in 88 citations or arrests and 20 impounds. To date for October, I have the total number of calls, but on the 8th of October, the sheriff's office rolled out a new computer-aided dispatch system, and they're in the process of trying to figure out how to break down the calls exactly. So October day, we've had 545 calls for service.
Wow. So let me ask you on domestics, is that a high number, is that a typical number, and is it just a time of year?
It's, that's generally, just my experience, like the, on the two most prevalent calls are car crashes and domestics. Those can include anything where, you know, domestic violence, where it's physical and, you know, arrests are made, to somebody's having a dispute with their teenage child and, you know, we go out there and mediate it, but yeah, the domestics are pretty steady.
I mean, those are some of the most dangerous runs you can be on, so, okay. Do you have anything else for us?
We have, coming up on Saturday, October 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., at Central Baptist Church, we have the annual Yes, Trunk or Treat, which always is a great turnout every year and great thing for the kids, so here's some flyers for, for that, for doing.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to make everybody aware of that, hopefully come out there if you can. And the one other thing I had was, at the beginning of the month, department participated in Operation Bridge with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, which was targeting some of the more vice-type crimes and trying to get people, the goal of it wasn't just to make arrests, but to try to provide people with services that they may need to try to prevent, you know, criminal activity in the future, you know. We had people that were suffering from drug addiction, homelessness, in addition to enforcing the criminal laws, there was also a component of it where they were trying to hook them up with social services to try to solve the problem long-term. But out of that, out of the one-day event for that, there was 80 total traffic stops, 31 traffic citations, 42 traffic warnings, four-seatbelt citations, three-seatbelt warnings, eight felony arrests, 13 misdemeanor arrests, nine no ops arrests, one OBI, three illegal assets seized, and one illegal gun was seized.
Wow, so that was all on, yeah. Just imagine that was, in what time period?
They, I believe they began around 10, they went from about 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Wow, that's amazing that that much got done in that time period. So to the board, I sent Sergeant Pollock Peabody, we've had all the trouble, we put the signs up, we went through all that. I went through there the other evening, and there were several cars sitting in there, and I think you sent those in, correct, to Pollock? So yesterday, I went through there in the area, and there were seven cars, I believe it was seven or eight cars just backed in there in the curve, and those got towed, and then on the way here, I was just curious if they were as blazing to park there. Sure enough, they're putting cars back in there again. So my question is, if we could make that a routine to go through there, and they get towed, they get towed, eventually, they might quit parking cars in there, and all the work that we've done, working with the railroad to keep those cars out of there, if they're gonna do the type of business that they're doing, they don't have the room for that. And now I noticed that there's probably nothing we can do, but the neighbors, I'm sure, do not like this, that they are parking cars, you know, in the easement, right on their grass, because there's nowhere else for them to park it. You can't get one vehicle on their lot because every open space is there. So we are in the clear to have those towed, correct?
So that was, that's something that I haven't touched base with Lieutenant Ratliff. As of yesterday, I got some conflicting information from other people in the police department that I was trying to get worked out on my way here after I got your message. So my understanding is, we have an agreement with the railroad company to act as our agent to where we can trespass people off the property. So, and my understanding of that is, is okay, if we can remove people, we can also remove vehicles, so that's what we did last night. And then I was being told, well, there's been, that Lieutenant Ratliff had some discussion with the attorneys, and they were saying, no, you can't tow a private property, but then I was also told, well, that's in, that was a situation with the Westland Mall, where we're dealing with dedicated streets. So I'm all for what you're saying, because I've been out there and talked to the businesses and says, hey, you know, you can't park over here, and they'll move the cars, and then as soon as we leave, they'll move the cars right back. So I'm, I'm all for it, you know, last night, you know, we towed the vehicles out of there and, and, you know, they've been given plenty of warnings, there's signs out, they're parked directly in front of the signs, so I believe that's an appropriate solution. I just wanted...
Sure, if we could just cover ourselves to make sure that we're 100% in the right there, because, you know, I'd hate to say something that's, that's wrong and it come back on the township. I don't even know what they do, it looks like they paint cars at night, or if they sell cars, but there must be 50 cars in that corner. I mean, it's just, and I can only imagine and feel for the residents of that area. Any questions from the board?
Dave, I wanted to take a look at this, please, have you seen this before, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason that we're not getting them completed? Have you been given the directive from the chief or the lieutenant that we want that done?
Yes, Lieutenant Ratliff did put out an order, I want to say probably two weeks ago, for us to start redoing.
So you've been doing them?
Yes, at least on my shift, I can say, I know...
Okay, because I didn't get them, so the resolution the last time was, when they, he said, it's a lot of paperwork and they can't, it piles up, so I said, bring them here when you bring payroll over, and I only got one, I got third shifts is all I got. I didn't get first shifts, and I didn't get yours, when I knew you were gonna be here today, so it's probably done, and it just hasn't got brought over yet, but I just wanted to make sure, if there's a problem with doing this, I know you'd step up and say, you know what I'm trying to say. So there's been a directive by the whole board to do these.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, sure.
I know there's a bunch of them that's sitting in Lieutenant Ratliff's mailbox for him to, you know, review and get over to you guys.
I didn't know you hadn't seen it, John.
No, 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 I did, I was just, I mean, from here, I couldn't make it out what it was, I just need my glasses.
That's all I have, other than thank you and it's good to see you again.
I just wanted to thank you for taking care of Fisher Road, the property we were going up in there and talking to them, and talking to our resident in that area.
So that's another, there's two issues. We have a huge issue there as well, that they don't want, wish to comply, and that is the same as the business, it's greed, annoying, money-driven. You know, they're out of space on Peabody. There on Fisher Road, it's, I can book an event that is going to, you know, fill the whole parking lot, but there's more issues there, even for the fire department, is occupancy. If you have that many cars and you have one person per car, the occupancy for that party inside, and then they spill over into residences' properties and then drive through their property because they stack them in there three or two wide, so somebody will just drive through the residence yard to their driveway, which is probably 300 feet, then down their driveway, because they want to go home, but they don't want to make 10 other vehicles move. So that is another one, if we can, you know, especially on the weekends, if we can keep track of that. I know that we've talked to the owner of that multiple times. Chief, I believe we also went through and talked to them about the occupancy, and I know they split the building and things like that. If we can continue conversations with them, because obviously, from what I've seen from this weekend, there's, they were way over occupancy, so I don't know how they had that many people in that building, so...
I promise you, Saturday night, they were way over. I went by there at 9:30 and they were parking clear out on the Fisher Road, on the apron out on Fisher Road, and clear over into the auto body shop. It was a mess.
Yeah, I did go out and speak to the gentleman that's leasing from the owner of the property that's running this area, I did speak to him. He's a township resident, lives, you know, just a few houses west on Fisher Road. He seemed very agreeable to work with us, he says he has security, and I told him, if people are parked in the grass over there, we're gonna have to enforce and tow cars, so when we had our discussion this week, he said that he would have his security monitor that area and try to prevent the parking on there. I'll also tell my guys on second shift, you know...
Friday, Saturday nights, yeah.
The only issue becomes is their peak hours are generally our peak hours as well. But I did, his name's Lucio Martinez, he owns some other businesses, and he said, you know, one of my leases up here, I'd like to move on from this, it's become hassle for him, which at least he's trying, I feel at least he's trying to work with us, because we had, for a short period of time, if you guys recall, there was a different clientele that was in there, where we, we were responding to fights, we were going, we had shooting up there, so we'll monitor it, but I did leave the discussion with, with him feeling kind of hopeful that he is trying to work with us.
Do we know the landlord, the actual owner?
I do not, when I spoke to Mr. Martinez, he said that he has issues trying to get things resolved with the actual owner, that's why he wanted to get out of the lease, but he assured me that he's gonna try to do what he can do as far as being the person that's leasing it.
Because that's the next option, is to actually talk to the landowner and say, listen, your tenant is X, Y, and Z, we're spending a lot of man-hours going up there, and it's just not real good for the neighborhood, or for the residents in that area.
Right.
So, okay. Any other questions from the board? Here are none, I'll open the floor for any quick questions. Here are none, I'll close the floor.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. It's not also the front building, back in the back, where they do the countertops, they had a party that weekend too.
Ah, so between, okay, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify.
No problem, thank you. Let's go ahead and move to the speaker first, because I think we've went through...
We've got fire and road department.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dave, did you want to, are you here for the whole duration, or did you need to go ahead?
Let's just get the chief and the president.
No, apologies.
No, you're fine.
Looks like the fire department will be...
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Just a couple items of business and then a resolution. I was asking for, we did have two more resignations, two of our guys are moving on. One gentleman who is leaving was due to be laid off on Saturday, he found another job last second. So his resignation letter's a little different than the other gentleman's, was hired by Arlington. His name is Skylar Riggle, so if I could just ask for a motion to accept Skylar Riggle's resignation effective November 2nd of 2025, and I'm willing to read this if you want.
Sure, go ahead.
Chief Arnold, I'm writing to formally resign from my position as a firefighter with the Franklin Township Fire Department effective November 2nd, 2025. This decision does not come easily, as my time at Franklin Township has offered rewarding experiences, strong personal and professional relationships, and meaningful personal growth. I am also grateful for the opportunities I've had to serve alongside such a hard-working group of people. However, due to the ongoing uncertainties regarding departmental staffing, I must prioritize the long-term stability of my family. I truly value being part of this department. It has such a meaningful purpose, but stepping away at this time is a necessary decision for my future and family. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this organization, I will always appreciate the relationships I've built and the knowledge and experience I've gained here. I wish you, the department, and the entire Midtown Township, continued success. Sincerely, Skylar Riggle.
So I accept as read. If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second. Having the second, I'd ask for a roll call.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then Patrick Lundie, I would ask for a motion to accept his resignation. Also, Chief Arnold, I'm writing this. I am writing to request a chance to formally resign from my position as a firefighter with the Franklin Township Fire Department effective November 3rd, 2025, at O700. This would give me the opportunity to work through until the start of my new position with the Marion Township Fire Department. The current end of my tenure with Franklin would end this Saturday, October 18th, 2025, due to being laid off. I understand this would rescind the layoff notice, but it would be extremely meaningful to me to be able to resign as part of our department and beneficial to my future career not to have a break of service in my pension. He goes on, you can see these guys get together to write their letters, because the rest of the letters is basically the same as Skylar's.
So we'll accept it as read.
Yeah.
And if there's no further questions in it, I'd ask for a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
And a roll call me when ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
So with that said, I am down to 24. If we rescind the resolution for the three layoffs, which was 2025-162, it gets us very close to the number, so we don't have to lay these guys off, and we can see what happens with the levy and move forward and make informed decisions in three weeks, but it would, it would have you guys rescinding the three layoffs that are due to happen Saturday.
Okay, so do you have a, a motion prepared, you'd like to read?
I have a resolution, 2025-178.
I have something to say before that's read into the record.
I was gonna go to questions as soon as he reads it.
I want to make a statement before it's read.
Okay, sir, go ahead, sir.
I just need to clarify some stuff. So I received an email from the chief that said that you had a meeting, a labor and relations meeting with them, they had reached out to me and I didn't have time to do it, and I recommended for you to reach out to John and James, correct?
Right.
I wanted you to verify this as I go along, as I'm looking at you, is that correct?
Yeah.
So I saw where you had the meeting with them, and then I got an email that said that the union and the chief and yourself opinion is that they should be rescinded. James, were you involved in any way in that decision? Did you know about it?
No.
So, see, I have a problem with this, because we're supposed to be a board, and so we're all supposed to know stuff, and so you guys, being the union and the chief and yourself, made a decision and had this put on the agenda, and James and I have no idea what's going on. So it isn't so much that I understand his position, and I'm not even sure that I would be for it or against it, it's the fact that we're not kept abreast of what's going on.
So, can I, can I just... I, I didn't take offense to not knowing, because it was an opinion. Everybody is entitled to an opinion.
Sure.
That's, but the decision is being made today, it's just an opinion that would work out, that's how I took it, it'd be an opinion to be worked out, it'd be worth bringing to the board, I mean, that's, that's an opinion of somebody, and I don't believe it was a decision made.
So I'm happy for Bob to go ahead and read it, but I'll just say this, when I made a vote, back when we made the vote on it, I, I didn't just make the vote to make the vote, I put thought into it, and I had my reasons for it, and that's what I voted for, and so go ahead and read it, Bob.
Just a second before you read that.
Sure.
So when I was, I got a call, and, you know, as far as me meeting with the actual union, I met with some of the firefighters that happened to be union, no one from the union was actually at the meeting, I met with the chief, and basically looked at the manpower, two people potentially are leaving and et cetera, so I was in agreeance, no decision was ever made. I was in agreeance to, and I encouraged you as I did, right, to send an email to all three, because if I call and talk about it, that potentially is sunshine law. So I asked you to do that, and give a summary that we met, we talked, and that I would like to put this on the agenda for today because of the dates that people are leaving. Saturday is basically two days away, so the biggest, my concern is making sure we have the coverage that we need and what you need. So it was, to me, Dyer, straight to get this on this agenda since Thursday was the meeting, that was on Wednesday. So I did not make or imply any type of decision whatsoever, I just asked for it to be on the agenda and ask you to ask it to be on the agenda, I didn't even ask to be on the agenda, and that you notify all of us as you did, so go ahead.
I'm happy to go into my phone when you text me on that day and said, John is meeting with the union now. Is that what you said? You want me to get it out?
No, 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 I believe that, it was like...
But he just said that he didn't meet with the union. So was Scooter in the meeting or was he not?
Scooter was in the meeting.
Okay, well, Scooter's the president of the union.
He's a...
He represents the firefighters.
Well, he may represent, but he's not the union, like when we meet with the union and then they come in, and they're actual union, he's a firefighter for Franklin Township that...
James has got 10 minutes, let's get this done.
Okay, just a second. Scooter, what, what do you call yourself, you're union repor...
I'm a steward.
Steward, that's the word, okay. So his not paid...
What was his answer?
Is it, say it again?
I'm the union president.
Okay, but you are paid by Franklin Township, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are you paid from the union at all?
No.
So when I spoke with you, you were speaking to me in regards to Franklin Township, the jobs of the firefighters, is that not correct?
Yeah.
There was no one there from the union that was trying to differentiate between what the union contract says?
Nope, no, I wasn't doing the union contract, no.
So we were only talking in regards to what the staff level was gonna be and what it would mean with two people leaving?
Correct.
Okay, so if you'd like to read, sir, please do.
Resolution, 2025-178. Resolution, 2025-178. A resolution rescinding resolution 2025-162. The Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, met in person at a regular meeting at 12 o'clock PM on Thursday, October 16th, 2025. The trustee Mark below made a motion for the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, adopted resolution 2025-162 on September 18th, 2025, entitled a resolution rescinding resolution 2025-126 amended and approving the reduction of three full-time Franklin Township firefighters. And whereas upon further review of the township's operational and budgetary conditions and after additional consult consultation with the chief of fire, due to additional staff resignations, the board now finds it advisable and in the best interest of the township to rescind resolution 2025-162 in all actions pertaining to the layoff of the three firefighters, Joshua Ames, Patrick Lundie, and Andrew Schmidt. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that. Section 1, the board hereby rescends resolution 2025-162 in its entirety. Section 2, all directives and approvals in actions authorized under resolution 2025-162 are hereby declared null and void and any administrative measures taken pursuant thereto are withdrawn. Section 3, the deputy fiscal officer is directed to record this recession, recession in the township's official minutes and provide appropriate notification to any affected parties. We have further resolved that the, all formal actions of this Board of Trustees concerning or relating to the resolution were passed in an open meeting of the Board of Trustees and in all deliberations of the Board of Trustees and in any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the ORC. We have further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
I accept a resolution as read. If there's no further questions on the matter, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
Having a second on the floor, I'd ask for a roll call when ready, ma'am.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief from the board?
I, I just have one thing.
Yes.
Um, just a reminder, if you want to use, um, the Penny's Building, um, and I, um, I know CFD's using it and, um, SWAT's using it, county SWAT and, and Columbus SWAT returning sessions. Uh, I was concerned about the.
I understand. Yeah, we spoke about it.
Conditions of the building, but, uh, time that I have discussed, training there. Uh, I did want to say, just before I leave, that we are putting on a replacement levy, plus one mil. November 4th, please go out and support your fire department. If the levy passes, it will keep the one station on Solon Avenue responding to runs with a fire truck and an ambulance. Uh, if it doesn't pass, um, the consequences are pretty dire. We're going to have to go down to just what we may call permanent levies, which will be extremely minimal staffing and it will certainly affect our ability to respond to both fire and EMS routes.
So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for any quick questions for the fire department. Herein, I close the floor. Next up is Jim Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Stevens gets up there.
Sure.
I'm looking at it and, um, looking at time. Um, I just have one thing that I'd like to bring to the board before.
Okay.
And make sure it gets covered. Um, the owners of Westland Mall have reached out to, to me in the process of, of handling those meetings and they have offered up, um, a space in the, and, and it's the old Sears, it's either the old Sears buildings. Auto Center or NTV. I can't remember. It's one of those two gar, or two garages back there. Um, for us, if we would like to, to put a mid-shift hub for the mid-shift up, we got one or two mid-shift people?
Right now, we have one.
Okay. Well, they could come out there and report. Plus, it would be a hub for other officers in that area. Um, a safe place for them to go get a coffee or a.
Restaurant break.
Restaurant break, um, and intern before they, before they demolish the building. But just to say thank you for all you're doing for us that we.
So no cost to the township?
At this time, I, I don't believe it would be any cost to the township, but I, my, I'd like to make a motion that we allow Lieutenant Ratliff to explore the possible use of one of those buildings and report back to the board once he gets back and has time to do so.
Okay. Any question on said motion? Herein, I would second it and a roll call when ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser?
Yes.
Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
I know at one time they, um, came to us once before and there was, got to be no cost. They'd take care of the electric, the heat and et cetera and clean it up. And, you know, I guess it's still in Rubik's shape.
Yeah.
They would be able to put their cars inside what used to be the auto area and, and, and in winter, you know, protect the cars. So.
And then this winter. Potentially put some of our extra cars in there as the winter time.
Or anything we have that we have in the store to keep warm. So, Mr. Stevens, you're up.
I am going to slide out, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody.
Morning.
Uh, real quick, I've got some stats I need to get caught up on. I didn't have them, uh, two weeks ago, so I'll just read through this here real quick. Was able to get some of them put together. Uh, so far we've taken, since the last time, 58 loads of brush signage repair throughout the township with boom mode, like a line of sight on Harrisburg Pike. I had an issue where residents weren't able to see safely getting out on the Harrisburg Pike, swiveling ahead and trimmed that back. Pulled six loads of illegally dumped trash from the alleys. Um, couple, couple loads have come off of Ray Avenue. Down where we had the new fence put up in the cemetery, um, there was an old fence here with a bunch of, um, foliage and everything growing in it. We went down and cleaned that out so the fence company could get in and do what they needed to do. We blacktopped the area back there by the new shop. We moved the offices in the township hall. Boom mode, bunch of alleys, mowed and trimmed the cemetery. Had a tree fall across Big Run. We went down and we took, cut that up. We have one on Richter Road, which I've got actually pictured in a quote to get that one taken out. Uh, had multiple drain tile and catch basin repairs. Lot of trash piles, Harrisburg Pike, Deer Road, uh, mowed house, put 50 properties and a lot of paw hole repair. And we're also getting the deep backs ready to go. Um, new building has come along real well. Um, they're starting to get things waiting on a couple inspections right now so we can move forward with AEP hooking up to, uh, to the building to where we can go ahead and start firing some things up in there. So I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Tool on, on that one right now as we get that inspection going. I was asked and Nicole was kind enough to help me out with this, uh, for the banner or signage to go out onto the new building. I like what she was able to put together.
Put one in his pocket so he knows that there.
And this will go over on the front of our building, which hopefully will help people understand that, you know, the, the, the building wasn't funded where we took away from any other departments. That was not an issue whatsoever. Um, but at a cost of $48 for a four-by-eight banner that we can get put up onto the, one of the garage doors that stays down right now.
So would this come from your funds, general fund?
I'd be more than happy to take it out of one of my miscellaneous funds.
Well, I'm just wherever we're allowed to. We just.
I'll look into.
The reason I'm asking is so that, you know, you know, we know.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll look into it, what the legality is on it and make sure.
Okay. So you're going to need a resolution for this expenditure. Do we have one?
I think we have an open purchase order.
Yeah, we have, we have an open purchase order.
I think we've got a blanket there.
Yeah, I've got blankets that we, that'll cover.
Okay.
General fund and in, within the road department.
Okay, so we're good.
We're good. As long as you guys are in agreement with what it says and how it looks.
Um, so.
Maybe to accept the sign.
Yeah. So what I'm, I was going to say, make a motion to accept. So at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to accept this sign as, uh, as presented to us on this day. If there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
Um, verify something. 100% no other funds were used to do this building by ARP funds?
I'm going to say probably about 90% of it was ARPA funds. And then we had, there was a, like a building fund that we had been, yeah, it was from, other things, not necessarily tax dollars, but it was, it was all pretty much government funding.
I'll second it. And a roll call when you're ready.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser's excused. Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
Uh, next thing I have is we, every year up on Angero, we are asked to do a road closure for them to do their Halloween thing for the kids. Um.
Does somebody need to sign this?
Yes.
So John?
I'm sorry?
John can sign it.
He's going to go over and explain it to you.
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, Lauren Holton is the resident operator and every year she comes to us and asks to go ahead and close this down. Actually, we go up and we put road closure signs up and there. We don't have to come in and man it and pull the signs in and out. They actually have people that will pull them in and out, you know, when they get ready to close the thing down. But when we started doing the paperwork to make sure we had all of our basics covered, she went ahead and got everything filled out.
Sure. So we don't, we also have one here in a triangle that they usually do?
I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay, because that one was a long-going one and this one's been going on 10 years.
I've every bit of it because you know. I'm sorry, um, it's going to be on Saturday, November 1st and from 2 to 5.
Doesn't the fire department usually do that, Bob?
Yeah, we roll up.
Yeah.
We don't close the road. We just go out and participate usually.
We have the manpower to do that or you just take calls from there?
We take the fire truck and just run from there since it's township, which doesn't work.
And usually when, um, if I don't have something going on at the weekend, I donate my time or bring my truck up instead of getting the road closure up there.
They won't stay the last three hours and just make appearance, say hi to the kid, and get their costumes and house and candy.
But that's all.
Okay. So, um, if, if there's no further questions, then I would ask for a roll call.
Do we make a motion?
Uh, yeah, for the sign. Or we're, we already did the sign.
We're doing the road closure.
Okay, okay. So I got, I got behind because I know we asked a question and threw me off. So that's no problem.
No, so are you doing a motion?
Yes.
Okay, to allow for the road closure. Okay.
So at this time, um, I'd like to make a, uh, motion, um, for, for the road department, Jim Stevens, to close down on Garrett Drive on November 1st from, uh, no, uh, no, well, are you going to do 2 to 5?
2 to 5. And then on the 1st, it would be 2 to 5. And then if weather, something happens to the weather, it'd be November 2nd from 2 to 5.
And with that said, if there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
With the second, I ask for a roll call.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser's excused. Trustee Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Dee's already taken care of, so.
Okay.
Good. That's all I have.
So it just, you, you have anything, sir?
No.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to get in a habit to make sure the board has everything before I open the floor. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor. If there's any questions to Mr. Stevens, our road department supervisor. Herein, I will close the.
One more thing. We will be starting our leaf collection officially on the 27th of October, the week of the 27th of October, where we will have one of the machines hooked up a little bit early just in case.
So it seems like to me the leaves are falling late.
They are, but we're going to get that rain this weekend, so I got a feeling.
Okay.
It's going to start.
Okay, because it seems like all of a sudden they started falling, then we got rain and then everything greened up and.
And then, uh, right now Ryan and I are both working on, Ryan was actually out today this morning. Um, we're touching base back down here with Kurt's brothers about rethinking the whole idea about charging us $30 a load to go in there. We're also working with Ohio Moss down here on Harrisburg Pike. Even when leaves start, that's really going to back us up in time to have to go all the way up.
Sure.
Up north. There's a couple of other places that, that Ryan's looking into. Nicole was able to, she sent an email to us about that and Ryan's looking into that too. But more than likely with that being said, we will probably end up having to work over a little bit just to be able to keep caught up with everything if it backs us up that much more.
Okay.
I have something more quick.
I think that eventually, unless they've got more business than they can handle, um, somebody's going to go, you know what? Because everyone's going to be going to the other place. And I, I got a feeling either they'll reduce the price or come up with another method.
We'll be working with Prairie. Um, I know they're thinking about reaching out to them too because, I mean, you think about it, everything that they sell down there, we give to them for nothing.
Right, right. So once they quit getting it and everyone goes to the other place.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I was on my way home from the hospital and I was, work was being done on Rosemont. Is it done?
Everything's supposed to be done. Everything, all the planning and the paving and everything is supposed to be done this week. I think we there up until, I'm trying to see the math, through the 18th.
Okay.
Through the 18th. So hopefully.
Great.
Hopefully.
In case somebody reaches out or something. Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
So at this time, I'm going to go to, uh, we skipped over, and generally when we have, uh, Trustee Leeser leaving to go to another meeting representing the township, um, in Franklin County, um, I jump around because he, you know, decisions have to be made. I like there to be three trustees. So I'm going to go to, I think it was William. Is that correct?
Yeah, you were answering, you were answering my question for today.
Okay, no problem. I'll just check you off then. It was good that you came. Um, hopefully you'll come to our next meetings. We like to see residents come. So thank you, sir. Next up is Cindy Klein.
I just want to share some stuff with you guys. I've been studying the history of our township, kind of doing a deep dive and trying to comprehend the logistics. What's really interesting, and it is on our websites, um, after the formation of Franklin County in 1803, this is the very first township that was created in the state of Ohio, 100%. And what I find interesting, Prairie Township was second in 1819, and the men and the people that are involved absolutely blow my mind. There's Samuel White, Lucas Sullivan, um, Mr. Briggs. There's so many of them that were involved and that Mr. Alghire, um, we drive on these roads every stinking day and had absolutely no idea whatsoever. So I'm going to kind of compile some sort of a thing so that we can put it up, I can put it up via Facebook or whatever, or just kind of get a synopsis out to our people. But these men that were involved, they started in and working with the Indians and Camp Chase. The cemetery is ours. I don't know if people are aware of the fact that there still is a Camp Chase railroad that runs through the city. When I worked at Jones, went right through there by, you know, Resha's Auto Body and so on and so forth. And it's like, holy smokes. It's bizarre. I mean, we all know that the cemetery down the street is our history. There's a, it's listing in here of who all is there. And it was Lucas Sullivan and, um, oh my gracious, there's just so many of them. It blows my mind. I mean, Mr. Briggs' house is right over here in Briggsdale, henceforth its name's Briggsdale. And it's just like, we're the oldest township in the entire state, which is really, really wild. And then Lucas Sullivan and Sam White and a few others got together and created Franklinton, the first capital of the state. Gee whiz, it was on Mount Street. Isn't that crazy? And Green Lawn Cemetery is right behind it. And there is history of about the, there were a lot of waterways. And there's, part of our lands were swamps. And I don't know if people are aware of that. I do know right along here how it goes. But I just keep running into this information and it needs to be shared. And I think maybe this is.
Part of our history.
It, it, it is our history. I mean, the name's just flat, blow me away. And we're part of the original Virginia Military District. And that's like, oh my gracious. So I just, it's just like, maybe we need to do a little studying.
Sure. Sure.
Because I'm seeing that all the names of the roads that we're driving on, it's like, holy smoke. I had no idea, you know?
Robin, I do want to thank you again for the checkmarks, because days like today, it really helps me.
Absolutely.
Mr., did you speak on the handicap signs part?
Yeah, it's already taken care of.
Okay. And then next, I do have, that I did not, the fiscal department. Are we taking care of the fiscal?
Can I ask you to do something for me?
Sure.
So before the meeting started, you asked Robin to get Mr. Kirby's information to Lindsay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm assuming, because I'm not made aware of it, but she doesn't include me in any of her communications with you guys, so is she back to work?
I have no idea. I just, before I came to this meeting, I thought, let me check to see if there's anything real quick. And I apologized, because usually when I reply, I make sure everyone's name's on there. But I was running late, I had an early morning, and alls I replied back is, I'll check, or I, something like that. And so I thought, well, I'll be seeing Robin shortly, and I just see if we just send that over or if Mr. Kirby would like to say, hey, here's my information, I'm fine with that. But I have no, I will say this, I have to double-check and see. She sent me a letter that says something about light duty.
So that, that was my whole question, because if we have somebody who says they're off for medical reasons and all this time and everything, and everything, would we not need something that says they're able to come back and perform their duties? Now, I understand she's an elected official, but she chose to give us this statement saying she had to be off. So assuming we should get something to protect the township and ourselves that she's coming back. And see, and again, no communication. I've heard nothing, and I've been in contact with her and asked again to be included. And so James isn't here, so I'll ask you, and you and him work in tandem, so you can let him know that I need to be included in the communications.
Okay, so I do know that I, and you've probably seen it in my writings, I have said that you need to be included. And she starts wanting to quote, no, you're the chairman and the vice chairman. By law, that's all I have to do. Rather than get in an argument, I normally, ninety-nine percent of the time, make sure that you're included. Today, I did not. I just was out the door, I just said, I'll check on it. So I will check with Julie. I will send over and say, what does this mean? What do we do? I have no clue what to do with a picture of a letter that says you've got light duty. I don't know. I don't know what her job descriptions and detail on what classifies this, that. In my opinion, from what I understand, it would be the same. You know, if you had a broke foot, who's to say whether you come to work or not? You're an elected official, the same as me. And so I'm going to ask Julie to, I don't know what we do. I mean, my thing is just come to work, you know?
If I'm expected to vote on things that she does or anything like that, would I not need to have the information?
Absolutely.
So, you know, that, that argument don't float.
Right, right, right. And I'm not trying to make an argument, I'm just trying to.
No, I, I mean, it isn't your argument, sir, it's, it's her argument. She sent me some things, and literally, you know, when she gets upset or she, you know, I communicate back with her when she's striking venom at our staff and stuff like that. And I'm not going to have that happen ever again, as long as I'm here.
Sure.
And I go back at her and say stuff, she then sends me plenty of stuff, if you get what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah.
I get flooded with it then.
Yeah.
So she definitely has my information.
Right, right.
And she has no problem going back and forth with me then.
Right, right, because I've requested, and I can request again, as she's watching, please include all the trustees of the board, because a board is a board. A board, in order to be a board, it's not one person, it's not two people, it's three people. So I would request that all communications be there. And I try to look for that the best I can when I'm replying.
You've included me many times, but I was taken off-guard this morning when you, or earlier today when you asked Robin to do that, because I thought, I have been out. But I thought I'd missed something, and if she's back, I needed to know.
No worries. So ma'am, so Janet, do you have anything for us?
I do, actually, thank you. So first, I've actually been meeting with Mr. Kirby, met with him twice so far.
Okay.
And he mentioned that there is a training that he is facilitating.
Okay.
That he's requested that Robin and I, basically suggested that Robin and I attend, because it's talking about payroll and administrating and accounting stuff. It is on November the twelfth. There is a cost, but we do have an open P O that should, actually, is for training, so it will cover that cost. Cost is twenty-five dollars per person.
Okay. Any education that we can get, I'm all for our people, we still on the education. So we have an open P O. Robin, do you think, feel that we need to make, pass a resolution for that training? Where actually we can?
Well, I would think that you could, I'm just trying to look at this strategically. Janet, as an elected official, can go.
Right.
And we have an open purchase order, which approves that the purchase can be made.
Sure.
And Jim Stevens is currently my superior.
So, yeah.
So if my, if my, my time being off would be going through.
Right, so we're good.
Okay.
It's just if we was going to make that decision right here at the table, I'd like to have one more person before we went and voted on it. That's all I was asking recently.
We have an open purchase order for training already aligned for the year.
So we're good.
Just getting permission from Janet.
Anything else, ma'am, that you have for us?
I just want to let you guys, the board, know, but I don't know if it's kind of mute considering that the other conversations had. But obviously, I've been working with Robin and Nicole and learning these functions. I have been doing some of the bank reconciliation stuff, because I sat with Mr. Kirby. And I've also been taking on some of the bank deposits as needed. So just as an F Y I, I've been working diligently with them.
So are you liking it or are you hating us for asking you to take on the responsibility?
No, it's, to me, it's just a training issue. But for me, it's a mental thing with me.
Sure.
But no, I'm enjoying what I'm doing.
I know that's one position I couldn't do.
I will not run for officer, so.
Yeah, that, that would be kryptonite to me when it comes to that, because I'm not real good with that. But I do thank you as a resident stepping up and saying, listen, I want to try to help and bring the experience that you have had from previous employment. And that is no different than training you're getting ready to do. You brought a lot of knowledge to the township, so I do appreciate that. Mr. Levens, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything today.
Okay, and I do not have anything. And at this time, I'm going to open the floor. If anyone has any questions in regards or comments briefly in regards to today's meeting. Yes, Jan?
Okay, when one of our firefighters or one of our police officers or somebody gets sick and they're on leave, Mr. Age, you always ask, demands, well, do we have all the official paperwork as to basically why they're off and everything? Okay, why hasn't that been done with Lindsay? I mean, if you're on light duty.
There's a fine line there when you're an elected official versus a person that is either, one, in a union, two, that is a salary person or hourly person being paid. We, it's, it's just like, for instance, when we ask the state auditor or the state to look at this, there's no one been here since, one needing exception of August eleventh of twenty twenty-four. So that was the last physical day, from what I understand. The trustees have no, there's no bite that we have, there's no anything that we can do. Now, if it's an employee, any of the employees, absolutely. And generally, when we ask if everything has been in place, the reason that we ask that is because in the past, with the audit that we've had, evidently, we didn't ask, and there were certain things that were not done proper order and being said the correct way. So if they're all statutory, is it all statutory records, everything in order? And that's what we ask the, you know, when we hold someone accountable, we'll ask the lieutenant, we'll ask the chief, we'll ask the road department, and they would answer yes. So that puts liability on to them as they address the board of yes. Here's, and usually when I ask Steve that, Steve was the administrator, and we are holding his feet to the fire that all statutory elements have been met, you know, B W C, all the different things. So as your board, when we sit here, we're making decisions based upon, for the residents, how money is being spent coming across. So we have to do our job based on the knowledge that is given to us. So that's, if that makes sense.
And I totally understand that, that as taxpayers, we're paying.
Absolutely.
And that's why we come to you, that's why I'm coming to you right now, saying, I'm sorry that I think it's B S that she hasn't been here for over a year, and, oh, she's sick, she can't do her job, and now she's on light duty. And I'm sorry, I think everybody in here has had an injury or something when they've been on light duty, but their head still works.
Right. She has not had a pay this year, that I'm aware of. So, and when I spoke with Julie and took the documents that were given to me to her under, whatever, I'm not an attorney, so let's just say the attorney kept, those salaries, up to a hundred percent of her salary can go to the deputy fiscal officer, so, because they're filling in. I wish I would have known that a lot sooner, but now I know. And so those, those monies can't go back. So, and it was based on a doctor's report. This isn't it, but use this as a prop. The doctor states that she cannot work, or they cannot work, or he cannot work. I'm not saying one individual that we have to, that's right there. It's not, it's beyond our head now, above our head now. Because now we've got the doctor, a medical doctor stating that this person cannot effectively do a job. And I'm not talking about Lindsay, I'm talking about anybody in here. And once we have that, that's over the trustees' heads, that goes to legal, and from there, however it works out. Anyone else? So at this time, I need to, I won't forget to do this. Our next business meeting will be October thirtieth at twelve o'clock. And on, what is this, the on-site statute hearing on the thirtieth?
That property in Bridgesville.
Okay, gotcha, so that's what that is?
He wants to dispute it, he can come back for the next meeting.
Okay, so then also a a motion to approve ten sixteen, which is today, twenty twenty-five, audio, video, and meeting summary of as official minutes and records of meeting. For some reason, every time I read that, it seems choppy, but that's the legal term. If there's no questions on that, I'd ask for a second.
A second.
With a second, a roll call, please.
Trustee Fleishman?
Yes.
Trustee Leeser is excused, trustee Levens?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned, the time is now approximately one twenty-six. Thank you all for coming out.